I wasn't missing you for sure.
I'm just up here trying to keep things to the point.
Yeah.
Mr. Orr, about twenty, thirty years ago, there was some kids that crawled under a roll-up door at the Coliseum during the...
You are on video now.
I did not go under that door.
You're accused of it.
I don't think they ever knew my name.
We're glad you made it say this.
I didn't, I didn't, no.
He's on video now for it, so, uh...
I clearly did not go under that door.
We'll go ahead and call to order this June 18th, 2018 Board of Supervisors meeting. As always, we start with an opening prayer. I'll ask Mr. Slay if he'd be kind enough to get the things kicked off for us.
Father, we want to invoke your power with your presence with us here today. Father, thank you that you give so abundantly the wisdom and discernment that these men need. I pray for them now specifically, Lord, that you would open their minds to receive the information that comes today. I pray, Father, that they'll use discerning hearts and discerning minds to make decisions that are in the keeping with the best interest of our community. Father, thank you that we can participate in this government. Help us, Lord, today to do the very best that we can to make you pleased with us. Father, I pray that you would guard our hearts and our minds today, that you would preserve and protect those who are out there protecting us even now. We pray for them in Christ's name again.
I'm gonna get Ms. Janus to work on our air conditioner too while we're moving forward and work her magic. So, uh, we're gonna start with our first, uh, comment on public comments, and that's Judge Tom Brent.
If you have a cellphone, you may silence it at this time.
Mr. President, members of the board, public, thank y'all for allowing me to speak to you this morning. We have a wonderful resolution that we have presented to the board here today to celebrate Family Reunification Day. And I think as you see further on down the list here on your agenda, you got a bunch of great young men from Pisgah back here. And, uh, one of the reasons Rankin County is so great is because we have such great families and we have such great children. But for those children who are not as fortunate to grow up in homes that are quite as loving and protecting, when we have to remove them from their home, we have to put them in the Child Protection Services system. And we work with their parents to try and get them back to them as quickly as possible because everyone knows they want to grow up with their parents and their families. So what we're asking the board to do today is to adopt the proclamation that says, "Where is the goal for each child coming within the jurisdiction of the Rankin County Youth Court is to become a responsible, accountable, and productive citizen? Whereas each child shall receive such care, guidance, and control, preferably in a child's own home with their parents and family. Whereas it is the public policy of the state of Mississippi that the parents of each child shall be primarily responsible for the care, support, education, and welfare of their children. Whereas when it's necessary that a child is removed from their home, the goal of the youth court is to work within a family-centered practice that puts the family's needs, strengths, and choices at the center of the court process and engage the family in that process. Whereas collaborative decision-making with families increases parental satisfaction with child welfare interventions and improves compliance with treatment and service requirements. Whereas a child removed from their home deserves that the child protection system works diligently and promptly with the parents to address the family's service plan so that reunification with their family can be achieved safely and timely to promote their well-being and permanency. Whereas all children need the care, love, security, and stability of family unity, including parents, siblings, grandparents, and other extended family members to provide a solid foundation for personal growth, development, and maturity. Whereas reunification takes work, commitment, investment of time and resources by parents, family members, social workers, foster parents, service providers, attorneys of the court, and the community. Whereas for many years, a number of jurisdictions in the United States have been celebrating the accomplishments of families who have overcome an array of challenges to reunify safely and successfully, and others are starting this practice now. Now therefore be it resolved, the Rankin County Board of Supervisors does hereby proclaim June 29th, 2018 as Family Reunification Day and calls upon the people of Rankin County, Mississippi to acknowledge the importance of supporting families and communities by joining those families who have been successfully re-unified and celebrate this achievement with them on the grounds of the Rankin County Juvenile Justice Center from 11:00 a.m. to 1:00 p.m. through the generous support of the Rankin County Chamber of Commerce, Rankin County Sheriff's Department, Rankin County Office, and the Mississippi Department of Child Protection Services, the Mississippi Youth Court Guardians for Justice Program, and the University Community and Faith to Faith sponsors in conjunction with County Judge Thomas H. Brown and the staff of the Rankin County Youth Court and witness wherever subscribed to our names this 18th day of June 2018. So we would like to ask you to adopt the Family Reunification Day proclamation declaring June the 29th to be a day of celebration. And we invite you, the board, the press, the members of the public, to come out and celebrate with our families who've been re-unified through their hard work and through the many efforts that this board has allowed our court to provide. So we thank you for your support, and we thank you for all that you do. And come out and have a hot dog and hamburger with us. And we'll even let Jay Bishop go down the funny slide if you want to.
We want to, on behalf of the board, we want to thank you and your members and men and women over there in the court system for the work y'all do. It's a thankless job, I'm sure, and the work y'all have to do, and we're very appreciative of what y'all do with the resources that we are able to provide. Is there a motion to declare this proclamation? So, Mr. Morris II, by Mr. Gaines, all in favor, say aye. I'll oppose, like, sign.
Well, thank y'all very much, and we look forward to seeing you on the June 29th. And I will let you know that we have another proclamation that's coming from the Chief Justice that we'll be delivering to you in another board meeting wherein the Chief Justice is going to recognize the accomplishments of the county through the assistance of the Board of Supervisors here in our efforts in reducing foster care in Rankin County.
Super. We appreciate it, Judge. Thank you very much. I did want to make a comment. Mr. Cross is running behind a little bit. He is supposed to attend here, but he said there was chaos at the Fire Academy this morning, so, uh, he's trying to put out that fire, I guess, so to speak. Play on words. We'll move on. Mr. Gass is next on my agenda. I understand he's not able to make it, so we'll move on to Firefly Outreach, Ms. Harrington and Ms. Cooper.
Well, Ms. Harrington has a stomach bug, so you get me. I'm Lance Cooper's other half. I'm his better half, though. So, I'm here to talk to you about...
I'll agree with that.
Yes, but I want to give this to you first. I want to talk to you about Firefly Outreach. I just partnered with Firefly Outreach and Patty Harrington, she's on the front there, but she started Firefly because she lost her son to suicide seven years ago. And it's been reported that three million youth are bullied every year. It's actually become an epidemic here recently. If you've been watching the news and reading the paper, it's just, it's really bad now. And we go around to the schools in the state of Mississippi and bring her message of the empty chair, which is what the parents are left with in the aftermath of losing their child to suicide. There are three million youth bullied every year, and often the bullying leads to suicide, like I said. There is a statewide anti-bullying campaign that we've been working on with the governor and his wife, and it's called Mississippi Lives Matter on the front. Last year, we worked with them in getting the Bill 263 passed, which is the anti-bullying bill, and most recently is the car tag bill. So, here's the car tag. We have to sell three of these, pre-sold three of these or pre-sell three of these to get these actually in production. So when you get ready to get your tag, please buy one. Thirty-one dollars. Anyway, so we have been working with the governor and his wife on that and with the car tags and the anti-bullying bill. And we have a letter of an endorsement to go into the schools throughout the state of Mississippi, which Patty's been doing for the past several years, giving her the message, giving the message to the kids of the empty chair, and it's really saved a lot of lives. I've been with her, and afterwards, there are students that come up and say, "You have no idea. I was thinking about this today. Because of your message, I don't want to leave my mom and dad." You know? It's close to my heart, so I could all... Anyway, um, I have a soft spot for kids and our youth and saving their lives, and she's really made a difference, and I'm proud to be with this ministry. We recently talked to Martha and Ginger and Charlotte Christian. I don't know if y'all know who they are, but they're the district-wide for the Rankin County Schools, the counselors. And we talked with them a couple of months ago about Firefly, and we're trying to get into the schools, so prayerfully that will happen. But I just wanted to come today and let y'all know about what we're doing, and hopefully y'all will play in the golf tournament that we have coming up. Or those of you that play golf, or help sponsor it, would be wonderful. In your packet, you'll see the information about the golf tournament coming up in September, and a picture of the car tag that I just showed you. So, thank you so much for letting me come and talk to y'all today.
Thank you. Appreciate it. Appreciate y'all's work in this worthy cause.
Thank you so much.
Uh, next, I have Pisgah High School, and I want to turn this over to Mr. Steve Gaines, who is the representative for that district.
Well, uh, this is really, uh, close to me. The school is about a mile and a half from my house, and I know most of these guys back here and their parents. And for this small school to achieve what they, and not just in track, many ways, whether it's their show choir, football, academics, is just outstanding. It was the hidden secret of the South, but our community, I don't think we can call it a secret anymore. It's the fastest-growing school in Rankin County percentage-wise, and we're having some new construction. We'll have a new school here in maybe a year and a half or two, but, um, these guys have just done so much. And this is not a one-time, we're recognizing you today, but this goes for several years. And, uh, in a minute, I would like for the coach maybe to expand on what all the accomplishments this track team has accomplished. I mean, they, they're great kids, men. Uh, I gotta correct that. I'll have half of them waiting on me outside for that. But they've, they've done more than, uh, most of us when we were in their shoes, at their age, their grades and their character, and they exhibit great athleticism and sportsmanship. And I'd like to ask Craig to read. It's always long, so just take a breath and wait.
Absolutely. Coach McKay, would you come forward, please? This is Assistant Coach Warren McKay. Clay Jones is the coach of Pisgah High School Boys Track Team. He wasn't able to be here this morning, so Coach McKay, stand right there for me. We're gonna let Coach McKay serve as our point of contact here as I read this resolution. Don't be nervous. You're not gonna have to do anything. Y'all are pretty fast, so whatever I ask you to do, y'all get out of the way before I go. This is a resolution that recognizes and congratulates the Pisgah High School Track Team on their 2018 state championship. Whereas the Pisgah High School Track Team captained extraordinarily successful 2018 season by winning the Mississippi High School Athletic Association Class 2A Track State Championship. And whereas, uh, they have previously won the Rankin County Invitational Track Meet, the District 628 Track Championship, the Region 2A Track Championship, Region 328 Track Championship, and the MHSAA South State Championship. And whereas this talented group of athletes competed at the highest level in a total team effort, and the members of the team are, and by the way, we didn't think I was gonna be able to get all of the team members announced, but Coach Jones came through with an email while we were waiting, and so I have actually all of the team members. They're not all present, but I'm gonna read all of the team members. Guys, when you hear your name called, come forward and join Coach McKay here, okay? Here we go. The seniors are Dejus Barnes, Logan Keever, Brooklyn Wilson, Gage Brown, and Jonathan Morton. The juniors are Jeff Cole, Noah Thweet, Trevor Halet, Zane Cother, Cooper Patterson, Trace Crockett, Brant Warren, Jonathan Lindsay, Bryce Lawton, Mason Bolton. The sophomores are Ben Arnold, Mo Stowers, Kane Wilkerson, Madarius Fulham, and Cade Watkins, and our freshman is Khalil Evans. This talented group of athletes has another impressive statistic, Mr. President of the board, I want to point this out. Perhaps the most impressive statistic compiled by the Pisgah High School Track Team is their overall combined GPA, which stands at 3.5. We always congratulate the group. Yep. That means that's an average. I'm gonna ask who's bringing the average down. Whereas the Pisgah High School Track Coaching Staff is under the direction of Coach Clay Jones and Assistant Coach Warren McKay, and the administration of Pisgah High School is to be commended for their outstanding commitment to both academic and athletic success. And therefore, it's resolved today, the Board of Supervisors of Rankin County, we hereby commend and congratulate the members of the Pisgah High School Track Team, the coaching staff, and the administrative leadership for their championship 2018 season. On behalf of all citizens of Rankin County, we extend our heartfelt wishes for continued success both on and off the track. Thank you, guys. We're gonna come back, let's get a photo.
You got it, Chuck, or they need to move?
Yeah. Can y'all come this way, guys? Maybe get two lines going. Let's get two lines going. Come on. There we go. Very good. Y'all just stand in front of each other. That's fine with me. We'll angle it out. Congratulations, guys, on your championship. We're really proud of you, guys. We got the resolution itself I'm gonna have to complete now that I've got all the names. So, Coach, we'll get that to you just as soon as we can get it signed up. It'll be suitable for framing it. I don't want to do that. Thank y'all for coming today. Appreciate you, guys.
Congratulations, guys. Good job.
Now, that's a good-looking group of athletes.
All right, we'll continue on in our agenda. Next up is Mr. Keith Turner, who I believe is an attorney for one of our flood control districts. Along with him is Mr. Billy Orr, who represents Rankin County, at least one of the spots in Rankin County in that district council, and a gentleman over there handling the computer who I don't have your name, but welcome. We appreciate y'all being here. Mr. Turner?
Sir, thank you. Avram Morlansky is... Yes, this morning, I'm representing the Rankin Hines Pearl River Flood and Drainage Control District. And of course, with me is Mr. Orr. Mr. Orr sits on the board, representing Rankin County, which is made up of Hines and Rankin Counties, City of Jackson, City of Pearl, City of Flowood, the City of Richland, and the state of Mississippi. What I'd like to do first is run a short video. It's about three minutes long, kind of gives you a background. I'm here to give you an update on this flood control project because we're going public with the document this week, and there's a lot, you'll hear a lot about it. So I wanted to give you a quick overview of the video and then a short PowerPoint. I'll go through the project, kind of give you some understanding of what it is, and then I can answer any questions if you have any at that time.
The Pearl has been flooding as long as it's been a river. This is a flood in 1967. But the benchmark is the Easter flood of 1979, when the river hit a record 43.3 feet on the gauge at Jackson. The levees built by the Corps of Engineers in the late '60s nearly disappeared under the water. Downtown was inundated, and water got up to people's gutters in northeast Jackson. It swamped the few businesses that then existed on Lakeland Drive. Interstate 55 was shut down from Canton to Crystal Springs. Since then, there have been lots of proposals to keep it from happening again. The Shaco Dam in the 1980s, shored up and lengthened levees in the 1990s, and various lake projects in more recent years. None has ever moved forward, so the threat of another flood remains.
The way God has directed some of these rain clouds, we've been able to avoid it, but we've come too close.
Keith Turner is the attorney for the Rankin Hines Pearl River Flood and Drainage Control District, created by the state legislature some 50 years ago to oversee flood prevention here. He says a large-scale proposal to widen the river is our best chance yet at preventing another flood.
This project has gone further than any other project. I mean, we are in the second of a three-stage review process for the Environmental Impact Statement Feasibility Study. It has got more acceptance and support from both the federal and state levels than we've ever had before in any other project, and so we feel very confident that we're gonna be able to make it through the review and get approval from the federal government in the end, and then move on towards construction or financing and then construction.
Here's how it would work. This is the Water Works Curve on I-55. And right about here in the middle of the river, there currently sits a weir. It's sort of a small dam, and it was put there decades ago to keep a minimum amount of water in the river between it and the reservoir. This plan would essentially move the weir down to here, south of I-20, and then the river above that would be widened, taking in acres of unused land, about half of it already publicly controlled. In times of a flood, a much heavier volume of water could then pass right through rather than backing up into people's neighborhoods. The plan's backers say it would also make the larger river more accessible to the public for things like fishing and boating. Those recreational opportunities are something else the U.S. Army Corps of Engineers takes into account during its review.
So we're gonna give folks access to the river, which really changes. When people have water, people get excited about water. It'll help the whole entire community. It'll make the area more attractive. The people want it to move. It's an attraction that'll bring folks back, I think.
That's the opposite of what happened in '79, when residents had to get out with whatever they could salvage.
If a '79 flood were to happen today, uh, we would, we would see over a billion dollars in economic damages to structures, to economic impacts, to businesses, and so forth. We're looking at over a billion-dollar impact. So it's very, very important that we do something to get it, go ahead and get ahead of that where we're not worried about it when it does come, that we are prepared.
If this plan passes muster with the Corps and the public, it would cost about $300 million and take about three years to complete. Until then, the river runs through the same flood control system that's failed to protect the city at least twice before. Wilson Stripling, Three on Your Side investigates.
I'll jump over to a PowerPoint real quick, just give you a quick overview. This actually started many years ago. As I mentioned, that's the membership there. I've already gone through that. You can skip that one, Avram. Of course, many of you probably remember the '79 flood. Obviously, that's the flood of record. It was a significant flood. It flooded, obviously. Lakeland Drive was underwater as well. 55 being closed. You can imagine today 55 was closed and 20 was closed today. I mean, obviously, it would, it would affect the economy of the entire, entire central Mississippi, if not the state. Go to the next slide, please. And you'll notice in this slide, I want to point out, is that the levees on the Jackson County side, they're right here, they were actually overtopped. Of course, that's 55 underwater. So the entire area, Coliseum and everything, went underwater. The Rankin County side levees did hold, and the reason why they held is because that side didn't, and it ended up protecting Pearl. Go to the next slide, please. Of course, that's Lakeland Drive, as you can see, going all the way out. If you look to the, to the east up Lakeland Drive, all of that is underwater. And that, that is a significant flood today because now we have, we have four hospitals over in Flowood that would be, have to be evacuated if some similar flood occurred. Next slide, please. The other thing that folks don't realize is we're still very vulnerable to floods. In 2014, we came very close. Of course, every year, the water comes up and the levees do their job, but we come very close when we have high water. If we have a serious rain event, we're coming very close again to a flood event of '79. Now, 2014, we had a 32-foot river plus, and we ended up having an enormous rain event. The, uh, thank you. The, uh, folks told us that we were gonna get eight to 10 inches of rain north of town up here, which really would have created a flood worse than '79. Fortunately, the, the rain event, as you can see, split and went south of us, and the engineers told us it would have been worse than '79 with all the development that's occurred over the past 40, 50 years. So we've come close too many times. Next slide, please. That's the '79 footprint, and, and there's still a lot of things at risk. The airport in the corner, as I said, all of Lakeland Drive, all of the, the hospitals in Flowood are still at risk, all the development out there. Then, of course, on the Jackson side, we have, we have the neighborhoods in downtown. And then, of course, Pearl is susceptible. It's protected, as you can see, from the levees here. This is the Pearl, the Pearl levee that protects it all the time. But with a large flood event like we had before, they're susceptible to going under as well. Next slide, please. Well, we have a little technical problem. I apologize. I'm gonna go through it and just tell you what, unfortunately, you won't be able to see it, but go to the next one. Hey, there you are. Okay. All right. So obviously, I've already touched base on Lakeland Drive, and I've told you the structures there. Go to the next one, please. We started this many years ago. As you know, for some of y'all been here, you probably recall that, that there was a lot of attempts after '79. Shaco Dry Dam, additional levees, those failed for various reasons. Shaco, because of the people up there north of the reservoir did not want it. Additional levees failed because folks downstream were concerned about flooding for them. So the Pearl River Basin Development District took on several efforts. They eventually gave up, and the Levy Board, as folks call our client, the Flood Control District, took on the current project, which was trying to find a combination of an idea that John McGowan came up with many years ago. I won't get into the details under the federal law, but we're authorized project, and as you see that last part, I want to emphasize one thing. The Corps has been, been directed by Congress to expedite review, and that'll be important when I get to that section at the end. Go to the next slide for me. All right, so we've had to study the entire area. We've had to study the entire basin. The, the site, of course, is about a third down. There's still two-thirds of the river below us, and that's very important if you hear people come raising up concerns about this project. I'll tell you about it in a second. Two-thirds of the river below us, there's a lot of things that influence the Pearl River, not this project or the Pearl, or the Rossburnt Reservoir. Go to the next slide, please. The other things that's important to note is, is you can see, this is pre-project. Look at the, the river as it flowed. You can see how, a lot of sinuosity there. The Corps came in to build the levees, and they straightened the channel out. They also channeledized the river, which is less visible here, but they actually widened and channeledized it out from just south of Lakeland Drive all the way down south of 55. But this channeledization changed the whole character of the river, and that's important because our project that we're gonna construct is basically within the area that's already impacted by the Corps of Engineers projects. It's not a pristine river. It's not something natural. The existing environment has significantly been changed, and you'll hear folks, environmentalist people, being concerned about it. This is not a natural river. Go to the next slide, please. The other thing, as I mentioned in the video, is there's a weir. The Water Works Curve weir, which provides water and still provides water for the city of Jackson, about 35% for the city of Jackson and its customers, it, it changes the character also because it's damming up water. So that changes the, the characteristics of the environment north of that. We're, of course, moving that weir. We're gonna move it downstream. All we're doing is taking it out and moving it downstream. Next slide, please. The other thing that's important is if you hear folks concerned about this project downstream is there's a whole lot of other things going on downstream. I won't bore you with all the details, but they have a lot of their own problems on the Lower Pearl. You know, the Pearl itself actually splits, East and West Pearl, and there's been feuds in the past between state Louisiana, state of Mississippi, over how much water each side is going to get, and that still is not working right. But there's also an old canal that was built for Bogalusa by the Corps of Engineers many years ago, and they had to put seals or low-head dams down there. That also changes the environment down there, as well as there's, there's some serious changes that Katrina did to the Lower Pearl. The Lower Pearl has a lot of issues, and the people that are most concerned, or the folks that have actually, you know, vocalized their concerns without having read our document yet, are coming from the Lower Pearl area. Next slide, please. This is the project, essentially. The problem that we have is that, as you can see here, our existing levees kind of pinch in right there, and that forces the water up, and that forces Flowood to be flooded and northeast Jackson to be flooded. So when they designed this, they kind of needed to have made it wider. So we're gonna widen the levees out, as you can see here, and we also have another pinch point right down here. Here's the river right there, and that's the levy. That actually pinches it in as well. So you have two pinch points, so we're gonna move those out. We're gonna excavate this, this one down here, and we're basically just widening out and channeledizing the river so that there's an additional conveyance and additional flood capacity. People call it One Lake. We have not named it that. The press has. We, we end up using it sometimes ourselves, but it's really not so much a lake as it is just a widened river. You know, the Rossburnt Reservoir is 33,000 acres. This is about 1,500 acres, so it's, it's not really a, a lake in that sense. It really is a widened river. So we're, we're gonna widen the river out, and then with the, the material that we dig out of it, that's the orange areas, we're gonna put on the other side of the levees. So we're gonna create kind of like a super levy. It's gonna be very wide, and we'll actually be able, in some places, to be able to use the area on top of the levees. Now, you usually just have a levy width about the size of a road. It'll go back hundreds and hundreds of feet. You'll be able to put development or parks or whatever. We'll have opportunities for economic development as well as recreation, because right now, you can't get to the river. The only place you get to the river is a small place right here at this park, this state park. You put in the water there, you're right above the low-head dam for Water Works Curve. You can't go anywhere. You have to go up, only up river.[1682.23] Curve, you can't go anywhere, you have to go up, only upriver. So, there'll be multiple boat ramps and parks all along each side of the river, but there'll be opportunities for economic development, places like that there, and this year we'll have great opportunities for economic development, as well as parks and recreation, and natural areas as well, those islands will be natural areas for the species. Now, you know, hang on a sec, so, a lot of folks talk about how economic development is a bad thing. Now, this project is about flood control, first and foremost, that's all it is, but are there ancillary benefits? Yes, recreation and economic development. The reason why the economic development is a benefit is because we have to pay for this somehow, and if we can increase the property values, as well as save folks money, we can save and reduce what they're paying for things, we can help pay for this project. Now, it's a big project, and I'll get into it in a second, how we're going to pay for it, but economic development should not be a bad word. Go ahead, go to the next slide. This is the timeline, as I say, we started this one back in 2013, this study that we're finishing. We spent about two years on the study, but we've also spent almost two years doing reviews, it has had a lot of reviews. We've had what they call an agency technical review, that's where the Corps of Engineer experts from around the country have to study it, they studied it for over a year, they've given us comments, we revised it, we edit, so forth, so a lot of experts have looked at it. Then we have to do what's called an independent external peer review, that's another review that we had to pay for, Patel Institute, and that international firm is just finishing that up right now. So, again, experts in different areas, hydrologies, science, engineering, and so forth, all had to go through the process of review. We are now just ready to go to public comment this week. As a matter of fact, I provided a little flash drive that has the entire set of documents for you all, and I can get you, there's be a website that'll be functioning later today that has all the documents, it's almost 3,000 pages, a lot of information, and we're going out for public comment over the next 45 days, as part of the process, you have to get public comment. We're going to be having a public meeting on the July 24th over at the Ag Museum, and then we'll have another one downstream, and we'll have a meeting with other folks downstream as well, but official meetings will be the July 24th, and then the next week downstream. Once we finish all the public comments, and then we get the rest of the review comments in, we'll revise and edit the document, and then we'll be submitting it up to the U.S. Corps of Engineers Headquarters this fall, September, October is what we're shooting for. And they've been directed, and they're ready, we just, we were there last week, as a matter of fact, meeting with them, they're ready to start review, they're anxious to get it and start going through the review process. And I'll also add that our congressional support has been fantastic. All of our congressional folks have been really supportive of this project, and that's really helped to get us to where we're at right now. Let's see what we have in the last one. That's it, okay. So, let me give you a little bit about the budget idea as well. I mean, it's a $300 million-plus-dollar project, it's a lot of money, it's basically three areas that we're looking to. We have authorization for somewhere between $130 to $200 million from the federal government, and we're working on that aggressively to try to get that put into place. The other area we're looking to is the State of Mississippi. The State of Mississippi has had all of this property, and this is not the best picture to say this, but they've had protection every year, 130, 120 million in assets that the State of Mississippi has, it's behind the levees that are protected, year in and year out when the levees work. And so, they don't pay anything for that, so we think it's reasonable to ask the State of Mississippi to kick in some money. And then finally, the district, the Flood Control District, has bonding authority, and we're going to expand the size of the district, and we're going to be able to assess those folks that are getting benefits. And I want to tell you about those assessments, because that's important. I'll give you a few examples. There are, there's a commercial building owner, he pays $10,000 a year right now on flood insurance, $10,000 a year. Under our assessment, he'll pay about $1,500, and he will not need to pay that flood insurance, because we'll have, the flood maps will be redrawn because of this project. There are homeowners that are paying between, one fellow, I know he's paying $2,000 a year, he will pay about $400 in assessments, there's another fellow on the same street, actually, that's paying about 500, his will be about 250, he'll pay. So, all of, everyone who pays flood insurance right now will save substantial amounts of money, they'll still pay an assessment, and that assessment will go in to pay our bonds, but they're going to be saving a fair amount of money, and they will not have to worry about flooding anymore as well. So, if you have any questions, one last item, we sent a resolution to you all to consider, what we're asking is, all the public bodies in the metropolitan area, we're asking them to consider a resolution in support of this project, and we'd like you all to consider that as well. I don't know if you've all had an opportunity to read that resolution, if not, I can summarize it for you, or go through it with you.
I read through the resolution, it is simply asking for you to support, there's no commitment of any funding, there's nothing in there to suggest that there's an obligation on the part of the county, it is simply to support the project and request that the Corps of Engineers approve the project and move it forward towards completion.
Sir, motion.
I have a question first.
Sure, absolutely.
The, so, how do you think we're going to stand downstream?
Well, obviously, there's downstream concerns, and we're in the middle of dealing with those, we've met with both Louisiana and Mississippi folks downstream extensively. I will say this, we realized from the beginning that there were downstream concerns, and our report actually has a section specifically addressing those concerns. We looked at water quantity and water quality issues, and water quantity is not a concern, they shouldn't be worried, there are not impacts, it's not going to do, let me back up a sec, a lot of the concerns started from one individual, an environmental group, who went around scaring people. He was telling people that we were going to dry the river up, the industry was going to have to close, and the fisheries were going to all die off. I mean, that is just not correct. And so, I think when folks actually have an opportunity to see the science and engineering behind what we've done, the study, they'll see that this isn't such a concern. So, there'll be some people, we won't be able to change their minds, but we believe we'll be able to overcome that.
The area that you saw where it was going to be taken in, is that, where is that located?
The area we're going to excavate?
Right.
It's between the levees, there are no homes, no businesses.
But you said the area where you were going to have to expand the levy out, is that in the Flowood area?
Yes, sir, that's Flowood, yes. Right now, those are all, that's all wetlands area, that's not developable right now, anyway. Yeah.
How do you think it's going to affect the immediate downstream, when I say, I'm like, okay, this is supposed to, you show it going to Richland, when you go further on down, I say the Florence, but I'm talking, they've got a lot of rural area there that floods, and the reservoir is always, when they've opened the gates in the past, not as bad now, but used to, when they'd open them, all of a sudden, it would just immediately flood that area, which would be pasture land, farmland, et cetera.
Yeah.
With this being built, and I know it's to hold water, but it's some, in a major flood, though, is it going to have any type of dam on it, or is it, is it going, how does that going to work?
Well, we'll have a weirs, we'll have a larger weir than what's there, and we'll, I mean, what comes in is what's going to go out. So, I mean, a lot of, I guess the best way to look at it, if the Rosburnet Reservoir discharges, what they discharge will come through, it'll come through at a slower rate, and there will be some dampening of the effect as far as any changes in water elevations, but mostly, obviously, within a matter of days, we calculated out, what's released at the reservoir will be released over the top of our weir, because we're not going to be able to control flows in that sense.
Right, okay.
But as far as downstream, folks like that, they're not going to have greater flooding, they're not going to have, not going to have less flooding, but they're not going to have greater flooding or additional problems as a result of this.
No, they're just dumping.
Excuse me?
It's not going to just dump.
No, sir.
The way it's designed.
That's right.
That's what I figured.
Right. And there's actually been a study that we've got, that NOAA just completed one on the Rosburnet Reservoirs that relates to downstream issues, and they've realized, they actually analyzed all the flows over the past 10 years or more, and it's actually, the reservoir actually dampens flood events, it does dampen down flood events, because if you didn't have that reservoir, you'd have a much greater rush of water, because the Rosburnet, I mean, the Pearl River is such a shallow basin.
Right.
Water comes right into it fast.
Oh, it's gotten better, no question, over the years, I don't know what changed exactly, but.
Well, they've changed the way they operate.
Right.
Yeah.
Do we need to add this item to the agenda?
Well, it's on the agenda as a comment, yes, you would need to add it and then adopt it if you want to do that. I've looked at it, I don't see any issues. If you're predisposed, go ahead and adopt it, it'll be one less thing that these guys have to be concerned about, we'll get it off their table, they move on to bigger fish.
I think we're all good, huh?
I have a question. The 1,500 acres is, that sounds like a lot, but that's hardly, what's the length miles-wise?
It's about seven miles, river miles, and the width, maximum width, actually is going to come up to be about 2,000 feet in the widest area. So, it, you know, it's, the river right now is about 3 to 450 acres, existing as it is on water, between the channels, I mean, between the cuts, the, yeah, so it's about 1,000, 1,200 acre additional acreage of water. It is, it's not huge, by any means, we're not suggesting it's a Barnett Reservoir, by any means, but it's certainly a large enough body of water that, from what we've seen in other communities around the country that have done projects like this, it gets folks excited, and they will come back to these areas, as well as it provides, most importantly, provides the flood protection.
The flood protection really would be there at Flowood and Jackson, I mean, that'd be what it would address.
Yeah, Flowood in particular, of course.
Anything south of there is not going to change.
No, south, no, sir, that's right.
Anything north of reservoir has not been changed.
Well, no, north of reservoir, you said, no, that doesn't change, obviously, but Northeast Jackson, the neighbors up there benefit as well, yes. But, yeah, Flowood and downtown Jackson have an enormous benefit. Flowood, of course, you know, all of those properties come out of 100-year flood plan, they're there now.
Any other question?
Sir.
I make a motion to add this item.
Second.
Motion, Mr. Bishop, to add this to the agenda, second by Mr. Gaines, any discussion? All in favor, say aye. I'll oppose, like sign, motion carries. Motion to approve by Mr. Bishop. Motion by Mr., second by Mr. Gaines, any discussion? All in favor, say aye. I'll oppose, like sign, motion passes.
Thank you all, we appreciate your time.
We appreciate your time, Mr. O, we do appreciate your representation.
Good to see you all, we meet the second Monday of every month at Flowood City Hall at 10:30. You're welcome to come, but Wood used to come, Wood Brown, he'd show up about 11:30 and say, "Where do we eat?"
Yeah.
Good to see you, Daniel. Glad you escaped, Steve.
When I came in and saw the picture of that Coliseum, late 70s, I went, oh, Lord, he's going to have picture of me. That's what generated.
Thought you were swimming.
Yeah.
Thank you all.
Appreciate it, Mr. O. Moving on, Mr. Carl Franco.
Good morning.
Morning.
Just give you a little quick status update, I believe there's two items on your agenda that Laura will be handling, but just in case you have any questions. One is a pay application number 11 from Al Britton on the courthouse of $259,628.72. We've reviewed that and certainly recommend that, they're making good progress now that as long as they're not having much rain. The second one is on a change order, no-cost change order for the courthouse, this is to add 59 days of extension due to rain delays they had since they've been working over a year, I mean, you may remember last, last fall, so, we, our specifications have a certain requirement they have to meet to get those days, a certain amount of rainfall has to fall, and they can't, where it prohibits them from working along their critical path. So, we've reviewed that, and we do recommend that as, to approve those two change orders for the courthouse. That leaves still, right now, March of 2019 as a date to substantially complete that, and then the Mr. Manor is February, I think, of 2019, so these should, both these projects should finish up around then. Where Mr. Manor is still.
So, we're going to finish the Mr. Manor prior to the courthouse?
I think so, unless we find some more bad stuff. I tell you, it's a challenging site over there, but, yes, right, and that's just a simpler, less complex, less smaller building, obviously. And then, of course, we're in the process of finishing up the drawings to add to that the K-9 facility, so we're just about through, we've already sent the preliminary drawings to the contractor on the Mr. Manor for pricing, so as soon as, the last thing we're having to do is, we're constantly looking at ways to kind of save money, the, you know, if you envision the site over the Mr. Manor, you know, you've got 20 feet and all, so we, where the K-9 facility is going, we've got a big retaining wall, so we, we're trying to divide that into two smaller retaining walls, and our engineers tell us that's going to save, save some money, so that's where we're at now, we redesigned that, it's kind of trial-and-error method. I don't believe there's a flat site in Rankin County, it's not around here, I just, we hadn't found it on our projects.
It's by the river over there.
Yeah, I tell you what, but anyhow, that's where we're at, both the Mr. Manor and courthouse projects are now finally, after all the rain, are proceeding as fast as they can proceed, and the K-9 facility should go forward, so, that's where we're at, if you have any questions, I think it's good for me to come at least monthly to update you all if you have any questions on anything, that's where we're going.
I just have one question, you know, we are, have been talking with some, a company on like helping us save some money as far as lighting and HVAC, and the new facility, are we going to all LEDs?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
That, the initial cost was more, obviously, but in the long run, it's going to save, it's going to save operating costs, it's going to save maintenance costs, and there are some programs that Energy has that may even give you some money back at some point, we're looking into that.
Yeah.
But, yes, that's, the price of LEDs have come down substantially in the last few years, and it just makes sense.
Hey, one thing I saw was that the furnishings and all is not included in this Mr. Manor facility, it's something we need to think about at some point, whether it's in budgets coming up.
We did budget money for furniture.
Yeah, I think it's still in the project.
Not in the Mr. Manor, it is in, the courthouse has actually already been ordered, and the prices came in under what we budgeted, but the Mr. Manor, I think, and I don't want to speak out of turn, I think the sheriff is coming out, he's got a fund for that.
Okay.
Anything else from Mr. Carl?
I thought it was in there.
Carl, we appreciate it, thank you.
Thank you all.
Moving on to number four, here a motion for June 4th minutes. Motion by Mr. Carl, second by Mr. Morrison, any discussion?
Oh, we've got, Mr. Norris is here, he wants to say something short, he's got tribal, can he have, can he come in, sure?
That's item L under my section.
He's got a, he's got a meeting that he needs to move.
Okay. We could take that right after the consent.
However you're working him.
Okay. All right, we had, okay.
Yeah, the motion is, I had to say.
Motion by Mr. Carl, second by Mr. Morrison, any discussion? All in favor, say aye. I'll oppose, like sign, motion carries. Item five, consent agenda, motion by Mr. Carl, second by Mr. Gaines, any questions? All in favor, say aye. I'll oppose, like sign, motion carries. All right, Mr. Slay, we'll bump you up.
This is item L under my section of the agenda, consideration of and potential action to adopt a resolution that declares the intent of the Board of Supervisors to enter into a lease-purchase financing arrangement in an amount not to exceed $1,250,000 pursuant to Section 31A1, as amended and supplemented from time to time, with the Central Mississippi Public Improvement Corporation, for the purpose of acquiring, constructing, financing equipment, and leasing a public building or buildings. This has to do with the county maintenance facility, the, as you know, you guys have looked at on a couple of occasions, a proposal by way of Venture South LLC, which is a construction company, that has constructed a number of metal structures, metal, large shop-based metal structures in our vicinity, we've had a chance to actually look at them, inspect those, and this is a process that will allow the Board to enter into a lease-purchase arrangement with what is in essence the Central Mississippi Planning and Development District. This is a process that's been utilized on a number of occasions, and it helps with streamlining the process, saving costs, and shortening, shortening the construction timeline dramatically. And so, that's what is before you. You've had an opportunity to look at the renderings, in fact, I've got.
Mike, can you have your render?
I think he showed them to us.
So, a rendering of the facility, and for the purpose of others in the room, this has to do with a parcel property that we have recently acquired from Rankin First Economic Development Authority, that's in the industrial park here in Brandon, it's the 90-acre site, and this facility would house the road department, and would allow for both, for all of the road crews to have a place to gather, and for all of their maintenance responsibilities to take place, and also serve as an area for the storage of much of the road department material. And so, it's, this is, has been reviewed by your staff, Mike specifically, Tim Parker and I have been involved, looking at these issues, and we think that this process is an appropriate process to move forward with. The reason for the resolution being put before you in the manner that it is, I'm sure there's some, some questions there, is that this is a one-shot deal. We either set the bar at a place where we don't have to return, or we live with the aftermath of not having set it high enough, so this is an aggressive figure that is in excess of what we believe the construction costs will be, but we have a number of other costs that are associated with the transaction, the cost of the transaction itself, and then you've got some other, some contingencies that are included in here, not the least of which is that we may have to ask the contractor to provide a significant amount of the site prep work. We don't, we hope that we don't have to, but we want to be prepared in the event that we do have to do that. So, on the order of about $100,000 over our initial estimate is for the potential of the contractor himself being required to do some of the site prep.
What was the, what is the price? What are we thinking, what did we finally come up with as a price we think it's going to be?
Just shy of $1 million on the actual construction costs, including the site prep work, you're up in the neighborhood of 1.1, and so, the rest of this would be transactional related, and some additional costs associated with the financing arrangement.
How much land will we have to put with building?
We haven't made an official determination yet, we're going to let CNPD help us with We're gonna let, uh, CNPD help us with that call. We believe that, that we're gonna put about 15 acres total.
How does that impact us if we decide to do something else in that area with another significant building? I mean, we're gonna have to go back and redo this, or?
It will, I'm, I'm gonna look at Tim back here, but it's, it's actually carved out in such a way out of the 90 that we believe that it will be essentially, it'll be walled off from any other potential construction-related activities that we engage in, and we're, we're looking at a number of other potential county structures out there. And so the idea behind carving out a smaller parcel for this transaction was with all of that in mind, and where they would be located. So as far as, as we're concerned, we're carving it out in such a way that it's not gonna impact any, any other potential county buildings.
Okay.
And I'm not suggesting about why 15 was just a number. We came up with, that may be a little aggressive. We may be able to get away with 10.
All right, I'm making a motion to approve.
Motion approved by Mr. Bishop, second. Second by Mr. Morrison, any discussion? All in favor, say aye. All opposed, like, sign, motion carries.
Okay, thank y'all.
All right, we're gonna, we have a rest.
Good job, Lynn.
Appreciate it.
That's always, yeah.
Troy, you wanna say anything?
Moving back up to Mr. Wur. Sorry, Mr. Wur, if you need.
Have a good day.
All right.
Good morning, Jim.
Yes, sir.
Can I say something for Mr. Wur passing that out?
Sure.
Oh, I got a call from the last candidate yesterday, they, they're diving, they have served some Mike and him, and even once I called Mike and him, and it took them longer to load up with the boat, like, and make it up there, they went in the water, no time they found the body, got it out, and, uh, just because of his skills and, uh, and the quick jump, all of them, uh, seriously, it wasn't how long.
It was from the, once we finally got the location where we were gonna start at, um, soon as we turned the, uh, the sonar on, I checked the time just to, to keep track of it, it was less than 60 seconds.
Did some of that have, had some of it?
That's awesome. Mike, who, who does that with you?
Uh, last night, we had, uh, Brett Ishing was with us, and also Brian Elwell was with us.
I've seen that operation.
Is he a volunteer, or?
Brian Elwell is, uh, he actually volunteers with us on our dive team.
Yeah.
He works a lot with the EOC, he's also, uh, with Brandon PD.
Brett can run that sonar as good as anybody around.
Without a doubt. There was, uh, not, not to, just to tell you what we ran into when we got up there, there was either four or five other boats up there, everybody was running sonar, um, but I don't believe anybody up there had the sonar that Rankin County has. Uh, we just recently made an acquisition, uh, within probably the last, probably 60 days, last two months, uh, with the latest and greatest, newest in technology aside in down scan sonar, it's all HD, and it's literally, I mean, it's, it's unreal. It is, if you were to lay down on this floor, that's basically what you're seeing on that sonar. And it literally took less than 60 seconds, and it was there.
Good deal. Number A, Mr. Wur.
All right, um, back in January, we, um, we started looking at some, some other exploring opportunities on, uh, getting information to our volunteer firefighters across the, uh, across the county. Uh, as you well know, uh, they use the radios, and there is also out of the CAD, the PTS, there's a PTS administration page, uh, which is totally designed to, uh, notifications for 10 to 12 people at a time. When you fire off a, an email with 30 or 40 emails in it, and then you do a second page, you got 60, you've got another department that fires off, you're gonna have 100, 150 emails in a queue. Sometimes those notifications go through in two to three minutes, and sometimes it's two or three days, um, before these notifications come out, and they get hung up inside the queue. We're looking for a way to get around that, and we have found it with e-D dispatches. We actually were supposed to be able to do a 30-day free test, um, with e-D dispatches. It has went on for six solid months. Uh, we ran into some issues with the CAD system over at the Sheriff's Department, just the, uh, the version that the, the Sheriff's Department is using now is just, it's a little older, it just wasn't compatible. Uh, we've been in contact with PTS, the sheriff has had a couple of his folks that have been on this, and they've worked for two solid months to get us the availability where this thing will work. PTS had to go in and do some, uh, configurations on the CAD for us. It is now working, and now my watch actually goes off a second to a second and a half prior to the tones dropping on the radio. Not only are we able to do that, it's got one-touch, uh, mapping features on it. As soon as it comes up on your CAD, you're one button away. It brings up your Google Maps, takes you straight to it. It is, um, it's in the Google Store, it's in the, uh, the Apple Store as well, so any of those. The folks that don't have smartphones, not a problem either. Um, it does, the, uh, it'll do telephone calls, it'll actually buzz your phone with a phone call, give you a recording of what actually the dispatch is. Any of your smartphones, you can do an app, a text, or a phone call, or any combination thereof. It also allows to take some of the work away from, uh, the communications lieutenant over there, Mr. Raven, who is constantly having to go in and update for almost 400 fire departments, or 400 firefighters across the, uh, county. With their phone number changed this month, they changed carriers, this changed, that changed, they have to go in and physically do that, and they're doing that every single day. This takes the responsibility off the Sheriff's Department, puts it over on the fire department. We will actually give them administration rights to that, they would take care of that themselves. Two other real quick things on this. It also gives the fire chief or his top brass, whomever they so choose to do, where they can use their telephones and basically do a one-touch mass message. Uh, they can send those out without having to do the, if you do a text message, a group text today, you're limited to 10 people, so now you have to redo your text about three or four times to get it out to your people. It's an unlimited amount of folks, it's one shot out. You can also get replies back of who's available, who's not. We at the EOC have that same capability, that we could go and send a message out specific to Florence Fire Department, specific to Southwest, specific to the reservoir, whoever it is, or we could do a countywide. That's where it's the big thing for us, having a weather event that's coming in, and we can actually send out a quick text, and poll our folks, and look at a list that we can print out, who's available, who's not, who do we have available prior to this event coming in? At this point in time, I really don't have a way other than the radio system to communicate with our responders. We just don't have that capability. This would open that up. It is fairly expensive, I believe. It's, uh, in your paperwork, it was estimated at $500, the quote's coming in at 588. That's gonna give me 400 people that we can push this out to. It goes in lots of 50, 400 people is what it's gonna do. That's enough left over that we don't have to go back and reconfigure this thing, and it's enough that I wanna get the, uh, the brass with the Sheriff's Department involved in this, too. When the dispatchers dispatch out, they dispatch out with a code, when they put it in the CAD. Whatever crime is this, whatever's going on is this code. There are certain things that happens with the Sheriff's Department that the, I'm gonna call them the top brass, administration, is notified every single time, uh, on our larger, um, higher crimes, when those happen here in Rankin County. When they push this in, it would automatically push those out to the sheriff and his top brass, whomever he so chooses to, uh, to put on that. This is a test, see if they, they may want on it as, as well, I don't know. Uh, we'll just have to see how that works out, but there's enough extras in there to, uh, to be able to put him on board of that as well, so.
Mike, when you say 500 and whatever dollars, is that 500 and whatever dollars for the entire, the global, or is that per fifty unit?
No, 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 that's, that's total, 588 for the version four, which is gonna do 400 people, and it's a month-to-month. There is no contract whatsoever. If next month we decide, hey, we don't wanna do it, then we package up a, uh, two pieces of equipment that they sent us, because it also will, there's a radio component that goes with this, too. When the tones go off, all of those have a code by them, they've got a parser that listens to that, it records, it turns around and sends it back out, and on your phone, you can push a button and actually hear a recording of the dispatch that just went out three minutes ago. If you missed where it was, if you didn't hear exactly what the nature of the call was, push your button, play it back, and, and you can hear it again as many times as you want to.
The security is good.
So far, we haven't had any issues at all, and this is secure. It does come straight out of the CAD. As soon as they take a 911 call, 911, what's your emergency, they're typing the information in. As they're typing, they can't even tone this thing out yet until they finish and push, save, and continue. Once they push, save, and continue, it opens up on the other dispatcher screens, at which point then they can encode it. But as soon as they push, save, and continue, it pushes it out to New Jersey, and there's four other places across the country in case one was to go down. Right now, everything goes to New Jersey. Goes through a parser, I don't know how this thing works, but it, he told us in 1.45 seconds, our phones are going off, and I can tell you that mine does. Usually, my watch is going off before the tones ever drop on the radio. It is that fast. I don't understand the technology of how it works, but I know it works.
So where does this figure into the scheme? Like now, we do the pagers and the radios.
Right, and what we would do, this would replace the PTS paging that they're using now, which is not designed to do what they're doing with it. That, the PTS admin pages, that is really designed to notify your people at your Sheriff's Department, your top brass, if you will, six, seven folks that you're sending a, a text message out to, not 100 or 150.
Remember, when they send those text messages out to the fire department, they may come in in a minute, two minutes, it depends on the cellular system, the towers and all, getting those messages out. So it's, it's basically another text coming to your phone through that app.
And what we would do, I would take them, I would take the fire service off of the PTS admin page, once we got this up and going, and that eliminates the, uh, the administration end of the Sheriff's Department, having to go in and almost on a daily basis go in, and they're doing admin on our guys, going in, changing numbers, they get emails every day.
What do we do with those, those pagers?
It's, it's not a physical pager.
No, no, it's the text.
It's on your phone.
Oh, okay.
The, the paging system.
We gotta steal work, that's our.
I got you, Mike. Explain, I mean, I, I think I understand, you've alluded to the radios, and, and I, in my, well, in District Four, there's a few places, and especially if you're in a metal barn or building.
Right.
That your radios sometimes don't work, and sometimes when they're in there, there's so much traffic, if it's something big, people are talking over each other, and they don't get the traffic. And I, I mean, I want people to think, well, how many different ways do they have that they gotta get in touch with each other? But even at the fire department at, uh, 43, uh, well, you can be inside that fire department and not.
That's right.
Get a radio strike.
Up, up in the area where you're talking about, and also down in, uh, Mr. Morrison's area, down in Southwest, we got folks that's standing there looking at towers, cannot talk.
Yep, and that's important.
A chief in Southwest has to get in his vehicle if he hears the call, a mile to a mile and a half before he can ever communicate on the radio.
And, and that's important whenever we've got a fire that's going, or, or you got a fireman in there, you got.
Absolutely, and I hate to say this, we should never rely on a text message or cellphone for our notifications. We should never do that. However, we are fortunate enough in Rankin County that we've got a lot of volunteer firefighters that keep us safe. A lot of times, that's what they're relying on. They're, they're leaving their radios in their truck because maybe they'll pick up, maybe they won't, but they all have their cellphones on them, every one of them do. And, uh, that's where a lot of them are, are relying on those calls, to come in through their cellphone.
Well, Mike, I wish you was here when Motorola's selling all this to us, the pagers and the radios, and, and it's the best thing since sliced bread, we covered, and, you know.
So this is all new.
It never seems to be able to get there, though.
Yes, sir.
There are motions.
Been a little while, but not long. Yeah, I'll make the motion.
Motion, Mr. Cross, so, second. Second by Mr. Gaines, any discussion? All in favor, say aye. All opposed, like, sign, motion carries. B, Mr. Wur.
Okay, the, uh.
Have you tested this in, in some of these areas, like Steve's talking about?
We actually, I've got Lake Harbor on it now. Um, what we did when we did the test, 'cause they had to build the parser, um, the guy that, uh, Mr. Bishop, if you'll understand this, that, or make it explain it better than I can, they have to bring all this information, we pushed all the information from the Sheriff's Department out of the CAD. Everything that they typed in went straight there, and there's like 70 or 80 little blocks of information they can put in. A lot of those are not used. We didn't want all those coming to our phones where you're having to scroll through this thing, so they built a parser that pulls the pertinent information from it, and it took a lot of calls to do that. So what we did was we took Monterey, Florence, and the reservoir, because those are our three highest call volumes, and that's what we built it with. And now we've put Lake Harbor on it as well. All, everything is ready to go, uh, should you decide to, uh, or be desirous to do this, it's, it's a couple of phone calls, and everybody in the county will be, uh, can be on it. We'll do a training there at the EOC, uh, for the folks that are gonna take care of the admin side of it, and, uh.
Well, it looks like it'll, to me, it'll benefit everyone, but the people, maybe in the rural, more rural areas will benefit more.
Probably more so.
They're gonna get, they're gonna get more information.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So.
I mean, if you've got places where your phone is, uh, loses service now, it's not gonna lose service with this?
Oh, it would. Yeah, as long as you gotta have service.
Right, I'm just, that's, that's where the problem is that we're.
It's just an addition, it's additional backup to this pager that we've always had. You're still gonna have that.
Okay, but I, I mean, that's, that's the problem in Southwest, down in there, you got those different areas, just dropped the call.
And, and the radio antennas as well, uh, that they can't talk on, there's some places you can't get any cell service whatsoever, uh, nor radio service.
Right.
You are totally dead in the water.
The deal with the radios, that I've heard, is a lot of times there's so much traffic that can't anyone get through because you got too many people keying up at the same time.
That's true. I have, I've been on the side of a, a mini-road since January, hit that radio and it just, I get a solid tone. Nothing I can do, I just cannot talk.
You just need to be here, Motorola comes around, you know.
So.
On to B, please.
All right, that is the, uh, just getting authorization from you guys on the, uh, the fireworks display that's gonna be up at the reservoir for the July 4th weekend. Talked with Brett Ishing, he's been in, uh, conversation with the folks that put that on every year. Uh, we've talked to him, just make sure that they were in compliance with the, uh, with the county ordinance, and that's all it is.
So move.
Thank you, Mr. Cross, second. Mr. Bishop, all in favor, say aye. All, all opposed, like, sign, motion carries.
I'm gonna leave you with this right here, this is just some good, uh.
Bob didn't create this one.
I know you, uh, most of you probably were down at the, uh, Supervisors Conference. There's a, uh, some misnumbers out there about the First Net that is not actually AT&amp;T, this First Net is a federal mandate, uh, went through Congress. We've got those, that, those people are gonna come in and talk to you guys on the, on the 28th. And to give you a quick rundown of what First Net is, is AT&amp;T tied to it? They happened to win the, uh, request for proposals. When the federal mandate went in, they did a request for proposals and sent it out. There's some other companies out that are, uh, that are pushing some other things, and we're gonna let them explain to you what the true First Net is and what the capabilities are, and we'll go from there. But that's just some really good, reading some really good background on it, so you can, uh, have yourself educated.
Mike, we appreciate it.
Thank you.
Miss Sullivan, come on.
I just made it. I just did the third one. There it is.
How to make the fish change to 2017 rail and first.
Motion approved by myself, second by Mr. Cross, all in favor, say aye. All opposed, like, sign, motion carries. B, please.
Uh, request of void of 2016 tax sale, should've been tax exempt.
Motion approved.
Motion approved by Mr. Morrison, second by Mr. Cross, all in favor, say aye. All opposed, like, sign, motion carries. Thank you, Miss Sullivan.
Backing one more thing, if you indulge me, I need to, uh, amend my budget for, uh, the post office. I think they just contacted Janice and said, we didn't have any money in there.
We don't have to amend the budget, but we do need authority to cut the check. You know how much you need.
Have no idea.
Okay. Is that for your posters permit?
No, the re-business reply.
Re-business reply.
Go ahead, make the motion subject to your, is that okay? Does somebody make, add this to the agenda?
So, so move.
So move, Mr. Morrison, second by Mr. Cross, any discussion? All in favor, say aye. All opposed, like, sign. Motion to approve by Mr. Morrison, second by Mr. Cross, all in favor, say aye. All opposed, like, sign, motion carries. Thank you, Miss Sullivan. Ms. Bridget.
I have one item this morning, I'm requesting approval of a copier contract with Rico for Chantry Court. It's just, they have an existing machine, the contract's about, about to expire, it's replacing that machine.
Motion approved by Mr. Cross, second by Mr. Morrison, any discussion? All in favor, say aye. All opposed, like, sign, motion carries. Thank you, Ms. Bridget. Mr. Parker.
I have one item on the agenda, our Holly Bush Road improvements.[1639.75] I'm recommending approval of pay request number one in the amount of $290,580.89 to Southern Rock LLC and thought to the issue to check.
So move.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Gaines. Second by Mr. Morrison. Any discussion? All in favor say aye. All opposed, like sign. Motion carries. Thank you, Ms. Parker. You got something else?
Yes, sir. Just, it's actually involved with the same contract.
Okay.
We have a, a letter request from the contractor who is Southern Rock that the retainage on work, they set at five percent of the work. Now, our document, I have initially told the contractor on this one, I just recommended to you, you know, because our documents say that our retainage is 10% until 50% of the work is completed. And then the retainage can drop to 5%.
Why don't we just readdress this later when it's 50%?
Yes, I have no problem. But the only reason I, I bring this up-
I know.
The contractor has written a letter, and I take it on myself to say no at this time. We'll obviously change that. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Parker. Mr. Slade, I think it's your turn.
Under my section, we are setting public hearings for the same day in items A, B, and C. And so I'd ask that we take those as one motion.
So move.
Second.
So moved by Mr. Bishop. Second by Mr. Morrison. Any discussion? All in favor say aye. All opposed, like sign. Motion carries D.
Item D is a public hearing on the Ronnie Moore conditional use permit, 141 Deer Ridge Trail District 3. Mr. Moore is seeking a conditional use permit to replace his father's existing home at 141 Deer Ridge Trail with a 2018 16 by 80 manufactured home. This is a 16 acre parcel of family land. It's zoned RE1. RE1 allows manufactured homes as a conditional use in certain hardship, temporary, or emergency situations. And Mr. Moore's father is elderly and in poor health. He needs to move his father close so that he can care for him. The existing home will be torn down after this new home is set up. So at this time, we'll open that public hearing. I'll ask if there is anyone here to speak in opposition to the Ronnie Moore conditional use permit. Anyone to speak in opposition? Mr. President, I don't see anyone here to speak in opposition on that matter. We'll close the public hearing. At this time, it'd be appropriate to take action.
I make a motion to approve.
Second.
Second by Mr. Morrison. Any discussion? All in favor say aye. All opposed, like sign. Motion carries D. Slade.
Yes. Item E is a public hearing on the Grady Keith Allen conditional use permit at 280 Oakdale Road. This is District 4. Mr. Allen is seeking a conditional use permit to add two 40 by 72 buildings to the existing storage area that is located at 280 Oakdale Road. The two buildings will be used for covered parking of campers, motorhomes, and boats. It's a 21 acre parcel. It's zoned RE1. We'll open that public hearing. I'll ask if there is anyone here to speak in opposition to the Grady Keith Allen conditional use permit. Anyone to speak in opposition? Mr. President, I don't see anyone here to speak in opposition on that matter. We'll close the public hearing. At this time, it'd be appropriate to take action.
I, I think we should approve it. We, I'll get with Mr. Allen on other details, but I think we should approve.
Second.
I take that. A motion to approve by Mr. Gaines. Second, Mr. Morrison. Any discussion? All in favor say aye. All opposed, like sign. Motion carries. Next, Mr. Slade.
Yes, the next item is the True Built Homes rezoning request. We're gonna take this as a two-part matter, and I'm gonna ask you, after we conclude the rezoning request, I'm gonna ask you to consider adding something depending on how, what the outcome of the rezoning request is. This is a public hearing on the True Built Homes LLC rezoning request. They're seeking to rezone an 18.06 acre parcel on North Sand Hill Road from A2 to RE1. And this will be for the purposes of a lot, a five lot development site. All of the lots will have frontage on the public road. Each lot will contain 3.67 acres. They have included a set of restrictive covenants in their permit application. It sets the minimum heated and cooled area as 2,000 square feet. If you approve the rezoning request, we'll move forward with a dimensional variance request, but we wanna take the rezoning request first. So at this time, I'll open that public hearing. I'll ask if there is anyone here to speak in opposition to the True Built Homes LLC rezoning request. Anyone here? Yes. Please come forward. Just state your name and address for the record.
Good morning, gentlemen.
Good morning.
Ryan Birch, 116 Thomas Drive. I'm not in opposition to it. I'd like some more details on how the, I own property nearby. So I'm wondering how that being changed from residential or from agriculture to residential, how that may impact us. And you've already spoken to the size requirements, and that was one of my concerns, is what the developer had planned for that property.
So what are the size from a, of each of the lots that are being proposed?
3.6.
3.67?
That's right.
So they're four acre lots roughly, and 2,000 square foot minimum on the houses. They all have frontage on North Sand Hill Road.
Road, North Sand Hill Road.
North Sand Hill Road, right. So essentially, the reason for the rezoning request is in order to develop a subdivision in an ag zone, it has to be rezoned. We don't allow subdivisions in an ag zone. So the, the impact is that if it were not going to be a subdivision, it could still have residential uses there, right? It's gonna be a subdivision. All right, so I, I don't know that there's any real impact.
Now, under the regs, I mean, you, not long ago, this wouldn't really be called subdivision because it's just four or five, and they're coming out to the road, they're joining a county road. But we've seen that multiply, and it ends up being those. And then there's another little drive around back, and then there's some more. So now, the second one, if it was just two, it would be called a subdivision because it's subdivided the land. And we want to protect the community to where we don't lose maybe the environment that we have. And we have these meetings to where people can see and, and help us decide if it's the right thing or not. I'm not gonna say it's a problem. The issue that we have is that end of the county is just really popular to-
It's growing fast.
Go to, yeah. And I don't want to change the atmosphere that's out there. That's why people are coming. So we, I mean, I'm right with Renee that every one of these, we need to look at and scrutinize and make sure that what we're doing is staying within the same environment that we have. But I talk to the developers and make sure that they communicate, and it's on public record, that you are asking us to move out into the agriculture area. There's gonna be chicken litter. There's gonna be airplanes spraying crops. There's gonna be tractors in the road when you think that you're in a hurry and you need to go wherever you need to go. That's what you're moving to. And I don't think this board will ever entertain any idea that we're gonna ask that to change. The atmosphere is agriculture, and I don't wanna change it. I cannot tell someone that owns, I mean, say yourself, if you come in here in 20 years and said, I've got 40 acres, you know, I wanna do this. You know, you may not get to do exactly the way you want to, and that would be, in agriculture, you could put a trailer right there on one acre.
Right.
And then the way it was in another year or two, you could do another one. Well, now, we're trying to protect that because those little one acre things, trailers, in some areas of our community have gotten out of hand. But I can assure you, we are as, well, nearly as sensitive as you are because I know you live right there.
Right.
And it, it will, whatever happens over there will affect you. But I promise you, we will do everything we can to not make it a bad environment or, or us- A deal where you can't get along with your neighbors because they come out there and don't want you to do what you've been doing your whole life.
Yeah, again, that was the main concern is that, and I'm maybe a little bit ignorant of exactly how all this plays out. Let's say, you know, he's got four or five homes that go in now, and the area obviously is growing, and that's great for us, you know. But at the same time, I would like some information or was really wanting to find out down the road, what are the odds of us or this impacting our property as far as our zoning situation? It should remain agricultural, correct?
That's what I was asked. What are you worried about it? What, what are you concerned about it affecting you in what ways?
Well, let's say, would there ever be a case where our area could be, or our, we have 11 acres there, any, any case where that might be petitioned to have our area rezoned? Okay, so it's not something that-
Everything around you, I mean, hopefully that doesn't, I mean, it might in a few years.
I'm just looking, yeah, I'm looking down the road, you know, subdivisions, smaller.
I don't think we have the authority to cram down any zoning that changes what your zoning is.
Yeah. Not, not without-
A public hearing.
Participate in it. It's unlikely that the board of its own motion would step out and whole cloth change zoning in areas. I've seen us try that one time. It did not go well.
Right. Well, and that was my biggest concern was, was finding out that, and you guys have told me exactly what size homes he's building, and I decided I don't have any opposition.
It's not gonna fix your taxes either.
Yeah, it was more of a fact finding on my part, show up, find out exactly what the plans were.
I think it bears pointing out, not simply because this gentleman has raised the question, this is a good opportunity just to say what needs to be said about zoning on the front end. If we did nothing at all with this gentleman's property, then theoretically, he could develop a site that has 15 acres. He could, if he can get Health Department approval, you could end up with 15 house sites on that, on that part.
Because the curb's shaded.
Yep. And in this scenario, he's limited to four. Those lots cannot be further subbed.
I think, I said four, I think it's five.
It's a five.
I think, and I had, I have said four too also, but I'm thinking it is five.
Believe it is. But, well, I, I actually believe from what I've heard. I've not met the man, but I think he's planning on developing, building a house for himself there, so I think he's-
I don't know.
In any case, thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you, Mr. Birch. Appreciate it.
Sir, anyone else to speak in this matter? Mr. President, I don't see anyone else to speak in that matter. We'll close that public hearing. At this time, it'd be appropriate to take action on the zoning, the rezoning request.
I make a motion to approve.
Motion from Mr. Gaines. Second by Mr. Morrison. Any discussion? All in favor say aye. All opposed, like sign. Motion carries. All right, Mr. Slade.
Yes, under that same notification, we, there was just a simple oversight on the need to, contextually to join to that rezoning request. The request to, to adjust the minimum lot size, which would be a, a dimensional variance request. And so we're gonna open that public hearing on a dimensional variance request. And since you've approved the rezoning request, you can take up the matter of the dimensional variance request. There is one lot in the proposed five lots that would have a front lot width of 58.29 feet. Our, our current zoning under RE1 requires a minimum of 100 feet. And so the request before you would be to allow for one lot to have a dimensional variance of 41.71 feet.
Craig, is this one where there's like an old church site or, or cemetery or something that's owned by something else? And it's, and that, it's not gonna be another lot or another house or whatever.
It's a total of five. This, this particular one lot would have a smaller or shorter front lot width to the public road by a measure of about 40 feet. So it's one lot dimensionally variance, 40 feet. So I would ask if there's anyone here to speak on the matter of the dimensional variance request for one of the five lots. I don't see anyone coming-
Is this, is it 100 or 150?
It's 100.
Is this a RE1?
RE1. Okay, RE1.
RE1?
Yes.
But I've had the same thing been asked. We didn't do it. I'm not sure it's RE1 or RE1A.
We don't allow subdivisions in RE1A at all?
Well, what he had was two. He just had, the lot was big enough, he wanted to build two on it, but because of the frontage, he wasn't gonna be able to.
It's 100 feet, okay. It's the same.
Because he was a little shy of it. Anyway, we, he wasn't able to.
Do we need to have a separate motion?
Yes, sir. We do need a motion to allow the dimensional variance of 40 feet off of the one lot, Lot 1.
I make that motion.
Motion of Mr. Gaines. Second by Mr. Bishop. Any discussion? All in favor say aye. All in favor say aye. All opposed, like sign. Motion carries. I'm sorry, Mr. Slade, go ahead.
Item G is the Sam Quinnetta Norwood conditional use permit, 340 Heather Road, District 3. Ms. Norwood is seeking, I think that's Ms., it may be, it may be Mr.?
Ms.
Ms.? Okay, very good. Ms. Norwood is seeking a conditional use permit to place a 2018 28 by 60 manufactured home at 340 Heather Road. It's an 81 acre parcel of family land. It's zoned A1. There are three other homes on the property. We'll open that public hearing, and I'll ask if there is anyone here to speak in opposition to the Sam Quinnetta Norwood conditional use permit request. Anyone to speak in opposition? Mr. President, I don't see anyone here to speak in opposition on that matter. We'll close the public hearing. At this time, it'd be appropriate to take action.
I make the motion to approve.
Second.
Second by Mr. Cross. Any discussion? All in favor say aye. All opposed, like sign. Motion carries. Next, Mr. Slade.
Thank you, sir. Item H is a public hearing on the Vernon McFarland, McFarland Enterprises LLC rezoning request, 1681 Highway 471. That's a District 2 property, Mr. McFarland. And McFarland Enterprises LLC is seeking to rezone the 3.2 acre parcel, 1681 470, Highway 471, from R1V to C2. He's proposing to renovate and expand an existing home on the property for a daycare facility. The adjoining property to the north is zoned C2. The property is bordered by a natural tree line, which will provide the buffer that's required between residential and commercial and to these adjoining properties. At this time, we'll open that public hearing, and I'll ask if there's anyone here to speak in opposition to the Vernon McFarland, McFarland Enterprises LLC rezoning request. Mr. President, I don't see anyone here to, to speak in opposition on that matter. We'll close the public hearing. At this time, it'd be appropriate to take action.
There's been a motion made by Mr. Cross. Is there a second? Second by Mr. Gaines. Any discussion? All in favor say aye. All opposed, like sign. Motion carries.
Item I is a public hearing on the Jim Foshee Southern Environmental Group, Inc. conditional use permit at Mount Helm. It's District 4. Mr. Foshee and Southern Environmental is seeking a conditional use permit to expand the existing Class 1 rubbish disposal facility at 495 Mount Helm Road with the addition of a 20 acre adjoining parcel. The 20 acre piece will be accessed from within the existing landfill property. The property is currently zoned RE1. If there, if the conditional use permit is approved, then Mr. Foshee will seek to amend the solid waste management plan to include the 20 acres in the existing Class 1 rubbish disposal facility. We'll open that public hearing, and I'll ask if there's anyone here to speak in opposition to the Jim Foshee Southern Environmental Group, Inc. conditional use permit. Anyone to speak in opposition on that matter? I do see that Mr. Foshee's here. If there are any questions, I don't see anyone to speak in opposition.
So would it be out of line if we ask him to give us, you know, major discounts on our use of it?
We are under contract with Southern Environmental Group, Inc. So if you have something like, I bet we can set up a time to meet with Mr. Foshee at some point.
Is there a motion?
Notion.
Motion, Mr. Gaines.
We're losing our leverage here.
Exactly.
Second by Mr. Morrison. Any discussion? All in favor say aye. All opposed, like sign. Motion carries. Mr. Slade.
Yes, the next item is a public hearing for the adoption of our new official zoning map. I think Renee's got, that's a map here.
What's changed on it?
Whole lot, man.
Well, we did that countywide rezoning where we, for commercially zoned areas with residential uses on them. I think it ended up being like 170 something parcels, so.
Y'all, y'all let me open that public hearing. I'm, I'm gonna open a public hearing on the potential adoption of our new official zoning map and ask if there is anyone here to speak in any way on the matter of our official zoning map. Is anyone to speak on this matter? Okay, now that we've got that out of the way, any other questions that you have?
This is just cleaning up what we had to-
A few other things too.
Things with, yeah, okay. This is all that down to Star and everything?
Most of it was the Star area, and then some other things, you know, that were found at the same time.
For the purpose of the record, we had multiple public hearings on the proposed new zoning map, multiple opportunities for public participation, and numerous follow-up discussions. Numerous follow-up discussions with constituencies, including supervisors.
Yeah, now's about the time Bobby have a question.
Okay.
Is there a motion?
Well, we need to close the public hearing. If there's no, no discussion, further discussion on the zoning map, we'll close that public hearing. At this time, it'd be appropriate to take action on your new official zoning map.
Most, Mr. Morrison, is there a second?
Yes.
Second by Mr. Bishop. All, any other discussion? All in favor say aye. All opposed, like sign. Motion carries.
Kay.
Yes, last but not least, this is the consideration of and the potential action to adopt an ordinance that prohibits cremation by persons, firms, or corporations other than those licensed by the State Board of Funeral Services pursuant to that code section.
Most approved.
Second.
Motion approved by Mr. Bishop. Second by Mr. Morrison. Is there any discussion? If not, all in favor say aye. All opposed, like sign. Motion carries.
For the record, that ordinance came at the request, the direct request and recommendation of your coroner. I don't think there's any suggestion that it's not an appropriate ordinance to put in place, but I did wanna make that clear, that, that he specifically asked for this assistance because we did not have a way to address it. Thank you all.
Thank you. Ms. Oster.
First item I have this morning is accept Trustmark Bank's lease purchase for six new Caterpillar rubber tire backhoes at the rate of 2.83% interest.
Motion.
So move.
Motion by Mr. Morrison. Second by Mr. Bishop. Any discussion? All in favor say aye. All opposed, like sign. Motion carries. B.
Next one is accept Trustmark for the lease purchase of six new 2019 Mack tandem dump trucks at an interest rate of 2.83%.
Question. Mike Harrison, are we, I thought we bought a whole bunch of stuff back earlier. Are we replacing some single axles? Or what, what does this get our fleet up to?
This is replacing the off of time, they're coming off their lease.
Oh, okay. So this is, this is not in addition to the fleet. This is just rotating out the stuff. Okay. Is there a motion? Is there a motion?
So moved.
Mr. Bishop, second by Mr. Cross, any discussion? All in favor say aye. All opposed like sign, motion carries.
C.
This is what, go ahead.
Sorry.
I was going to say, Carl's already presented this to you, this was for the 59 rain days.
C, motion.
Motion.
Second.
Second by Mr. Gaines, second by Mr. Morrison, all in favor say aye. All opposed like sign, motion carries. D.
This is pay application number 11 to Chris Allbright and Construction, the amount of $259,628.72 in authority to issue that check.
Motion approved.
Motion approved, Mr. Morrison, second by Mr. Cross, any discussion? All in favor say aye. All opposed like sign, motion carries. Any additional business to be discussed?
I have an addition.
How could you put it under yours court to begin with?
Because it wouldn't be an addition.
Because I needed to have something for you to fuss at me about. So, this, actually, I'm going to have to ask Mike Harrison a question. This is authority to reimburse for fuel that was purchased from Lake Harbor. They no longer accept the Fuel Man card, and I don't know which of your guys, to put the name in the record, that I'll be reimbursing.
Chinese, don't it, you?
Is it you? Okay, it's Mike. It's Mike's error.
Your man is?
No.
Yes, $160.51.
Got a motion by Mr. Cross to add that to the agenda, is there a second? Second, Mr. Gaines, any discussion? All in favor say aye. All opposed like sign, motion to approve by Mr. Cross, second by Mr. Gaines, any discussion? All in favor say aye. Opposed, motion carries. Next, Ms. Oster.
That's all under.
Harrison, you got something?
I think I do.
Come on up.
I think I covered this. Surplus and.
No, I hadn't, I hadn't covered that.
The dump trucks.
Huh? Surplus and all.
And I thought that was supposed to be on our inventory changes. Let me see, it might not be on there.
Where were the surplus?
Yes, yes.
Were we talking about tandems or?
Yes, I want to.
All right, Mr. Harrison, tell us what you got.
I want to add to surplus six tandem dump trucks.
That doesn't mean we're giving them away, it means you can get rid of them, sell them, whatever you do.
Well, I thought that's what we were doing. These are additional, these are the same six that we're replacing.
Correct. What I've got, I've got six coming in, and they'll be here this week.
Right.
And.
Are they not under the buyback?
They are, Jay, but I've got.
But we had to do a surplus to get rid of them.
They got to come off the inventory.
They got to come off the inventory.
Or go to auction or whatever.
It was confusing on all this, this all should have been, been taken care of, but this is the one we had to cancel a PO on.
This was one, right, that we're.
Covenant.
Right, and we didn't cancel, we didn't surplus them at the time because you were going to continue to use them until these came in.
So I either got to, when I get these trucks, I got to give them back this week, or we've got to go to auction with them, in which we do have a number, to go back to auction with them, on that, from then coming back.
So these, these were surpluses going to auction.
Either going to auction, or I've got a couple, I got a couple cities that's looking at them.
A motion approved.
Oh, they're looking at them.
You got another one?
No, I don't. And what I'll do though, is to complete the motion, I will add the asset numbers.
Are these tandems or singles?
Tandems. Motion to approve, add this to the agenda by Mr. Bishop, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Morrison, any discussion? All in favor say aye. All opposed like sign, motion to approve by Mr. Bishop, second by Mr. Morrison, any discussions?
You need to follow up saying.
Hey, 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 walking all over me.
He's having a discussion.
Walking all over me. All right, any discussion? All in favor say aye. All opposed like sign, motion carries. All right, as you say.
I started thinking about some of this reimbursement, I was thinking about those asphalt money for a second, District Two, but start thinking about that reimbursement.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, I mean, let's just, let's go back and look at District Two just again, because I did make the motion to reimburse your fuel this morning.
Anything else for, anything else on additional business?
Yeah.
Anything else, Jay, anybody got a thing?
Well, I do actually, I prefer discussion, up in the reservoir in my district, they're building up, I don't know if it's open yet, a convenience store, gas station, and literally right next door, there's always been prior to that a firework stand put there. But now, we about to have a firework stand literally right on top of some gas pumps.
When you say fireworks, you're talking about those big tents?
Yeah.
That's one of those big operations?
Right.
Okay.
And I think, unfortunately, several years ago, the board decided to grandfather in whether there's a gas station built or not right next to it, and I don't know if that's really, I mean, it shouldn't, public safety is public safety, and I don't know if just because they were there prior to a gas station being built, if it should stay.
The dynamics of the market always, is always changing, not always, but in some areas it's going to be growing, so that's why you have the conditional use. We need to remove it, then we just say, hey, we'll let you do it this time around, but next year, got to find someplace else.
Supposedly, we have two others that this would be major impacted by. There's one in your area, or Jared's, 468, 469, right there. Yeah, and then the one up on Grand Street Road.
That one's been there forever today, along with the convenience store.
Yeah, sure has. He's always on 468, Outbook, sure has.
One on 468, that's been there forever for a day, I mean, it's been there for a long time.
Right, that's what I said, they got grandfathered in because they were there prior to the gas station going in.
Well, I don't.
But, you know, that one, that one is, I, I just want to say.
What do we have a history of?
In our ordinance, we do say that they have to be manned 24 hours, and it, there's no lighting of fireworks, but, you know, I think we just, I want to make sure if they do, if there's a firecracker popped off, we need to have grounds to shut them down, don't come back.
I, I think the ordinance is like 1,250 feet or something.
1,320, that's a quarter mile.
But, yeah, but I do, but there is that grandfather.
Well, those grandfathers.
And really, the fireworks stands outside of those, oppose it too. Did it, you know, it'd be in that closet.
Yeah.